That the city school district was going to participate a little bit more from that perspective?
They are going to participate more. That's being detailed and there is going to be, I believe, additional, a new coordinator for the program.
On their end or on ours?
On their end.
But they haven't selected yet?
No, they have not advised the city of that. I know they're doing a recruitment, but that person has not been selected.
And the program starts again when?
The middle of September.
Mid-September. And do we have new, because we have a dedicated person from the fire department, correct?
Yes.
And were we working on trying to get additional support from the other discipline areas, the 911, the emergency communications and police?
There has been people, we don't need a, we have a teacher from the school district for RPD, but we don't have staff that supports that program. We do have staff from 911 and from the fire department that supports the program.
But staff not from RPD yet?
Yes.
Yes, we do?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
So you said we had staff from fire and 911 supporting, but do we have it from RPD as well?
They give some oversight, but they don't go in and spend hours, they don't spend time in the classroom.
Okay. And who's our new instructor or director since the last person moved out? Or is that the person you're saying RCSD is going to pick?
That's the person RCSD is going to pick.
Okay, got it. Great, thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Moving, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Introduction item number 290, authorizing cancellation or refund of erroneous taxes and charges. Comments or questions?
Moving, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Introduction item number 291, authorizing agreement to administer general liability insurance program. Comments or questions on this? Councilmember Ortiz.
So I'm trying not to repeat questions that were already asked, and I don't think these were, but two quick questions. Are all silly city facilities covered by this policy?
No, they're not. We self-insure for a number of facilities. These are basically the outside facilities that we don't have possession or control of, like the Warren Memorial, the Blue Cross Arena, the Convention Center, facilities of that nature.
Okay. And if you don't have it here, because I'm sure it's probably a long list, can you give us an idea of what our claims experience has been over the last couple of years for this general liability?
Well, for these folks, they process probably between 300 and 400 claims a year. And much of the money is out of our self-insurance fund, but they do the processing for this.
So, I guess I'm trying, so the light, but we have, what is it? A million dollar, two million, three, what, 10 million? What is the amount that we have with them? That, because are they providing the actual general liability insurance or just administrative?
Just the administrative services.
Okay.
With our money.
Got it. And 300 to 400 claims a year?
Per year, yes.
Okay. Just out of these four or so facilities that you mentioned?
No, no, no. This is a comprehensive program and they carry the outside insurance and then they process the claims that we self-insure.
For everything?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Moving, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Introduction item number 315, local law amending the code of ethics. Comments or questions on this? Councilmember Clifford?
Thank you. Can I just ask some follow-up on the list that was provided? I don't know who's best to answer that question. Because there are some people who are crossed out versus some people who are underlined. And I don't, some titles, I guess, I mean. I'm not sure that I'm clear. This was in the answers that were provided. So it's the attachment C. So my understanding, and you may correct me if I'm wrong, whomever, whomever wants to correct me. So the people, the senior management, mayor, council, we're going to continue using the long form, the more complex form. The other titles are going to, and boards and commission volunteers are going to return to filling out the shorter form, for lack of a better word. And so this list provided has some people underlined, some people crossed out. I'm just not sure what that means.
So the, it's based on the different names that, in titles. So like the Director of Budget and Efficiency no longer exists.
Okay.
It's the Director of Office and Management and Budget, so it's underlined.
Okay.
So that's where you're, where you see it crossed out. That means that that position doesn't exist anymore or it's changed. And so like it's, there is no Deputy Director of Communications any longer. So it's just a Director.
Okay, I see. All right. So this is more just a title list. And so everyone on this list will be filling out the longer, more complex form.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So I guess the only other question I had was at the end of the list when we have members of city, boards and commissions, except for the Downtown Enhancement District Advisory Board and Environmental Commission? Why is that?
So those individuals have to fill out the form, they just fill out a different form. They're not filling out the long form.
So they're going to fill out the shorter form?
So every, let me answer this in a different way. Every title and person on this list has to fill out a disclosure form.
Right.
More specifically, there's only certain people that have to fill out the long form and certain people that will fill out the short form.
Okay. And these people are the long form people?
It didn't break that out like that.
Okay.
This is just a list of the titles and the entities that actually have to fill out a disclosure form.
Okay. That's actually what I was interested in, and it was which positions are doing the long form versus the short form?
Councilmember? The long form is being completed by senior management, elected officials and candidates. Everybody else listed in the charter that's required to fill out the form will fill out the short form.
Okay. So most, gotcha. Okay, so I can?
And boards and commission members also.
I just have to use my brain? That could be complicated. Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then my second question was, we have had a couple of foil requests, from what I understand, for councilmembers who have filed disclosures for 2017 and they have been told that there were none on file. Yet, I know a couple of my colleagues and I did file by the April deadline. So I guess my question is, why are they being told that they weren't filed?
So I think that the overall request was for everyone that was supposed to fill out the form. And because we gave a deadline, or we extended a deadline, everyone's paperwork is not there yet. And so as soon as everyone's paperwork is in, then all of the requests will be fulfilled. So we didn't sparse it out and say that, that at this, so the question becomes that, not that there's none on file, because mine's on file, I think the deputy mayor's is on file already. However, because all of them are not in, it's better to send the entire package at once than to send it pieced out because we gave an extension deadline.
Okay, okay. I think it gave the impression that we said that we filed and we weren't telling the truth or something, so.
Oh, we can?
If that could be made clear to the foilers, that would be great.
Okay, we can definitely do that.
Great, thank you.
And I just want, I just want to follow up. I think the exception clause is the issue. When it says except for the Downtown Enhancement, do those people have to, are they waived from filling out anything? Is that your question, Molly?
That was a piece of my question, but I think I'm to understand that they're going to be filing the short form.
The short form, okay. Because I know that some of our city boards and commissions were concerned about the long form, right?
Correct.
And we get that. But then it says except for the Downtown Enhancement District Advisory Board and Environmental Commission. So are they doing the long form or are they doing no form?
They're doing the short form.
Short form, okay. I think that makes great sense and it's what we heard. And so I appreciate whoever helped make that happen. It's taken, it's made the people on the boards and commission, if nothing else, feel a little bit more positively about serving. So thank you guys for that.
Any other comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Introduction item number 316, authorizing agreements for councilmember designations to support various community programs and neighborhood groups. Comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Moving.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Introduction item number 317, authorizing an ammendatory lease agreement and new sublease for additional office space at 200 East Main Street. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Is there any other business to come before the committee? If not, we are adjourned.
At this time, I call the Neighborhood and Business Development Committee meeting to order and I ask clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Lightfoot? Councilmember Ortiz?
Here.
Vice President McFadden?
Here.
President Scott?
Here.
Introductory number 287, local law amending affordable housing policy. Questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Gruber?
I just want to say thank you to the administration for pulling this together. I think that there's, there's a lot that needs to be done to, to help clarify definitions and strategies about affordable housing. And this is a really great first step, so appreciated, full support here.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Just a simple request. We've gotten the percentages, the number of households that we believe fall into the categories, but can we also get the chart that actually provides us the income brackets for now the Rochester-specific information? It starts to allude to it in the transmittal that 74 for a family of four, we're half that. Can we get a copy of the actual income brackets for us?
Yeah, we'll get that.
Okay, great.
Well, councilmember?
Just quickly, so this really is going to help us in a prospective way. So my question was about how would it impact anything we're currently doing? And the answer was, anything currently underway is kind of stable, but it's as prospectively as we look down the road. Is that correct?
Yes, as we go forward.
Hi, thank you, okay.
Okay.
Mary, did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's correct as the commissioner has indicated that this is about going forward and it's because we're getting ready to release an RFP. And we want to make sure that we have this information actually passed to be included in that, in that request for proposals.
What is our connection? Who, who and where are we connected with HUD and the Buffalo office, probably? Who's, who's the most connected to them as we do this work? Is somebody from our administration connected to the people in Buffalo, the HUD people?
Yes, in our Neighborhood and Business Development Department, you can talk about, I mean, I think that each Carol and Mary Kay and Kay and all of them have connections, but we also talk to the regional director. I talked to the regional director as well.
Good, great, thank you.
Okay. And mine is more of a clarifying question relative to councilmember Ortiz's question. So when we're looking at these definitions and we're looking at the AMI, we are still going to be looking at the county AMI number. That's the number. But the understanding is that within the city, it reflects differently, which is why we broke that, broke this out so we could have a better understanding of it. We're not creating our own AMI number for the city. Is that correct?
That's what I thought we were doing.
That's, no. Councilmember Patterson?
Well, I don't think so, that's why I'm asking.
Councilmember Patterson, yes, that's, that's correct. And the, the reason we can't do that is because of the HUD regulations. HUD administers their programs by certain standards and across the country, it's by the metropolitan statistical area. But what we can do is take a look at the numbers that we have and calibrate how we evaluate affordable housing proposals by our city's numbers and support proposals that have units at the lower income levels. And that's what we're doing through this, this process, through the charter and through the RFP.
So, questions, comments, concern, anything else? Everybody happy?
No, I just, thank you for that clarification because I was completely thinking that this would be now our new set of guidelines for projects and RFPs moving forward. So I guess it'll still show what Councilmember Patterson said, that it will still go based on the area median income county weight, but when we decide who gets selected perhaps, will reference back to our own numbers? Is that what I'm hearing?
We will give extra emphasis based on proposals that, so the new breakdown, right, has four different classifications of the AMI. And so MBD will be giving additional emphasis to proposals that tailor to the extremely low and very low income, which, yes, they are still based on the MSA AMI, but we're able to work directly with the developers to figure out what the rents are specifically and so that we're tailoring them to our residents, even though HUD won't allow us to do it based on the city's AMI.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So Alex, I'm just, so would we, in our own judgment, say 80% and above would probably not be, would not work for us? Would we be able to say that in our own internal review? Because we know that doesn't work for our city numbers.
No, what, council, what we're going to do is we, we're going to evaluate each project.
Okay.
But when it comes to the affordable housing RFP that goes out usually every August, there'll be emphasis put on these different categories. So it's specifically spelled out in the RFP as a guide for the respondents.
And so the reason I say that, I was at a meeting last night with a developer who did, did a great job. He was tortured, as always, by the southeast residents in my neighborhoods. God bless him, and he did a good job. I don't know if Xena's here, Marguerite, so it's the Broadway project and he, he hung in there. They asked him everything from size of windows to, you know, where am I going to park and what kind of flowers? But, and he did hang, you know, God, God love the southeast district. But I think that often the question comes up, affordable, affordable to who? And 80% and over is not affordable to our, these happened to be market rate, so he was okay. But that's the only question. We get that a lot, affordable to whom. And I know that you got, I'm so grateful for this because it's the first time under this administration, we've actually sat down and dealt with this. And I think a lot of it has to do with my colleagues up here and with you guys. So I think it's going to be helpful. I just want us to be mindful of when people talk about affordable, you know, people sneer and say affordable to whom. So, you know, I've been dealing a lot with HUD myself recently with some of our projects. And HUD is HUD, so there's that. But I think we have to have our own internal kind of radar, and so I'm grateful for that. But, you know, 120 AMI is not affordable, so.
Well.
I mean.
Clarifying question. So we have taken, I think it's safe to say that a fair number of members of council are of the opinion that 80% and higher is not affordable in, relative to the incomes that the residents of the city of Rochester have. But at the same time, the question is, even though that's the case, 80% and above is certainly not market rate as expressed across the entire city. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Okay. Need a motion? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item carries. Introductory number 292, authorizing the sale of real estate. Questions, comments, concerns? Need a motion? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 293, authorizing the Seneca Building Partnership LLC to assume the obligations of the Seneca Building Reconstruction Loan authorized by ordinance number 2011-391, 2012-8 and 2014-82, and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the current owners to pay the city back for the reconstruction grants authorized by ordinance number 2011-392 and 2012-56. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, need a motion?
So move.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item carries. Introductory number 294, authorizing agreements for the 2018-19 Street Liaisons Program. Questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead.
So I see some previous questions asked on this, but curious, have we ever surveyed or asked feedback directly from the businesses themselves or the businesses that the liaisons have brought in about how they feel about the program in terms of the assistance that was provided?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Daisy answer that, because I don't know. Daisy?
Councilmember Ortiz, yes, we have. We collect an annual report in addition to a monthly report. And one of the things that we did going forward is to engage the business association leadership in the, the scope of service and the direction that they wanted to focus on in regards to each commercial corridor.
Are there things that, that were provided in those surveys that we've taken, I guess, to heart and made changes in terms of the type of services we offer? I, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, do the businesses themselves feel like this is, this is working for them? Do they feel, because on the surface, all of the things that we write about it seem like they all seems like wonderful things. Do the businesses actually feel like they're getting out what this program is intended to provide?
They do. And based on that information, this year going forward, we made some changes, particularly in the northeast, the associations. I'll be very specific. Portland Avenue and Joseph Avenue and Hudson Avenue were, they were doing work with the street liaison in regards to very specific activities they wanted to focus on and accomplish. And Joseph and Portland were able to do that. On Clinton Avenue, we had a bit of a barrier with the language. So we reached out to an organization on the avenue that could assist with a Spanish-speaking liaison. And that's how we were able to provide that service going forward. So in the council item, we identified Group 14621 as the organization that will provide that service specific to those businesses because they share that with us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so. Any other questions, comments or concerns? All right. Need a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Introductory number 295, appropriating funds for quadrant support. Questions, comments, concerns? Gruber?
I, I had just asked a question about the money being spent on trash cans and recycling. And the answer came back that it was really specifically for trash cans. I would just encourage, any chance we get, the more those things can be married together, the more we can create a culture of recycling in this city. So, you know, if, if we can't go back for this one, understood. But in future planning, I'd love to see recycling and trash go together.
Okay. Councilmember Ortiz?
So I'm happy to see this type of support for neighborhoods. I know we do this kind of stuff regularly, but I guess I'm, would still like to encourage us, because the next item being business associations, is to still consider having a pot of money available to resident associations, block clubs, of the sort, gap financing, whatever we want to call it. I would still like to kind of put a plug in there to really encourage us to provide a pot for those type of things. Many times, they don't need very much. They're just looking for a few hundred dollars or what have you to complete their fundraising goals for specific initiatives and projects. So I'd really like us to continue to look down that path for opportunities to assist those groups.
Any other questions, comments or concerns? Okay. Need a motion? Need a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item carries. Introductory number 296, authorizing appropriation for business association support. Questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Ortiz?
Just a quick question, and I apologize if it was previously asked. I hadn't had a chance to get all my stuff in on time. Can we get a list of the projects or initiatives that were used in last year's dollars? What they were spent on, if it hasn't been provided already?
For the business associations?
Yes.
Yes, we can give that to you. We, we're actually reviewing year-end reports and we'll get that to you.
Okay. And how many do we have currently, business associations, do we?
Daisy, what's the total number? We have more than more to apply.
We have 10 associations that apply for funding. We have an overall of 17 associations through the city.
Great, thank you.
So some associations didn't meet the medium, right?
Or didn't apply, right?
Well, I think you're saying that, that Park Avenue and Witten Road areas exceed the HUD median income guidelines, so they didn't, they can't access the funds, right?
Correct. Correct.
Where are you?
I'm right here.
Yeah. So I don't know, I don't know if they didn't apply or they don't meet the guidelines and they did apply. So I want to just, you know, sometimes, I'm not thinking about Park and Witten, but sometimes you think about Monroe Avenue. Sometimes there is, it's a long street with lots of different neighborhoods along it. So there could be a section of it where they actually might meet the guidelines. I don't know if we can parse a street like that, Daisy.
Councilmember Spall, specifically Park Avenue and Witten Road don't meet the HUD, the guidelines, obviously. In regards to looking at pockets, again, we would have to use the same guidelines.
Okay. So I'm, and I'm, I understand that and that I'm okay with that. They can, they can do their thing. But I'm just thinking about a street like Monroe where there could be, it's a long street and there's numbers of associations. There could be a parcel or two, a bunch of streets maybe closer to downtown where there might be some neighborhoods that are more likely to meet the guidelines. So are we able to?
Yeah, what would do counselors, take a look at that? My understanding is, is, you know, based on census tract. But, but I'm not saying that's not anything we won't look at. So Daisy and I will take a look and.
Thank you.
And get back to you.
I'm not worried about Park Avenue and Witten, but I was thinking about some of the other streets. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments or concerns? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item carries. Introductory number URA 5, Resolution, Resolution Appropriating Funds for Clearing Vegetation Overgrowth Adjuncting the Brooks Landing Public Promenade and Gathering Space. Councilmember McFadden?
Figure we just cut to it.
I'm, I'm supportive.
Good, no questions? All right.
Cut back.
He didn't have a question, okay.
Do you want to say why?
You, all right, we're good. Need a, need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item carries. All right, so now we're going to a held item. Introductory number 190, amending chapter 120 of the municipal code, the zoning code, with, with regard to official neighborhood contacts as amended. And we need a motion to adopt.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item carries. Unless there's any other business to come before this committee, we are adjourned. I'd like to call the Parks and Public Works Committee to order. And I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Evans?
Present.
Councilmember Gruber?
Here.
Councilmember Spall?
Here.
Vice President McFadden?
Here.
President Scott?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Introductory number 297, authorizing an agreement in appropriating funds for the installation of electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Entertaining any questions or comments on introductory number 297?
So moved.
It's been moved, but before I take the second, councilperson Ortiz?
Just a quick question. And it says downtown location. Has that been, I don't know if it's been asked already, but has it been selected of what the actual downtown location is?
Not yet.
Not yet? Do we have?
Councilperson Ortiz, we have yet to identify a location downtown. We're working with RG&E to ascertain that location.
Do you have a timeframe of when you will?
Well, I can't give you an exact timeframe right now. Well, I can't give you an exact timeframe right now. But we're looking at the East End as part of it. And there's certain electrical grid concerns that are associated with that. So we have to make sure we have enough power for that.
Okay. Thank you.
It's been properly moved. Is there a second to introductory 297?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Introductory number 298 is amending the official map by moralizing College Avenue as Gary Stern Way. There is a public hearing to be held on this matter at 5:00 PM after the August 16, 2018 committee meetings. May I have a motion?
I just want to add one thing. I want to thank DES for their help on this. It's just terrific to be able to do this. I want to thank you. I know it takes some time, and the Stern family was involved. And Gary Stern, as you know, is the mastermind behind Village Gate. And in many ways, brought us what we have now as Neighborhood of the Art. So it took, it took some work on my part, but not nearly as much as on your part. So thank you guys very much for this. And thank you to my colleagues for supporting this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on 298? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Introductory 299 is appropriating funds and authorizing an agreement for the Elmwood Avenue College Town Cycle Track Project. Very exciting. Any questions, comments, concerns on introductory number 299?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Introductory number 300 is a bond ordinance to the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $720,000 in bonds of the said city to finance the construction and construction inspection services related to the Elmwood Avenue College Town Cycle Track Project. Questions or comments? Councilmember Gruber?
Commissioner Jones, just one question about these two pieces together. Is there a timeline?
Yes, we'd like to start the project this fall. So...
And hope to be?
Hopefully be done late summer of 19.
Fantastic. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
So moved.
It's been moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Introductory number 301 is authorizing a mandatory agreement for the Gardner Firehouse upgrades.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Introductory number 302 is a bond ordinance to the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $398,000 in bonds of the said city to finance the cost of the 2018 Gardner Firehouse renovation project. Comments or questions?
So moved.
Been moved?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Introductory number 303, amending ordinance number 2017-186. Questions or comments?
So moved.
Been moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your ayes have it. Thank you. Last introductory to come before us, number 304, authorizing the sale of easements for the Mortimer Street Bus Shelter Relocation Project. Questions or comments?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the Parks and Public Works Committee? If there isn't any, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
You tired? Like you?
I don't know how that happened, but I... Right.
See, that I understand.
We can do that. Right. Well, you're supposed to be on board.
I thought that was like a...
It is free.
I got a little go back and look at it. But yeah, that was part of the whole conversation. It's a short window. Today's the 16th.
I mean, like, no, you know, no kids. So, and she lives, she lives in Seattle. But she works, she works for a center, so she's working in a project in South Dakota. So she's never home. So she, they fly her wherever she wants to go on the weekend, as long as they take the costs.
Well, it's community.
Public Safety, Youth, and Recreation Committee will come to order as the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Lightfoot? Councilmember Gruber?
Here.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Here.
Vice President McFadden?
Here.
President Scott?
Here.
Thank you. Introductory number 305, authorizing a grant agreement with the County of Monroe for the Tobacco Compliance Grant Program. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I say aye. Introductory number 306, amending the 2018-19 budget by increasing the appropriations for the Rochester Police Department to carry over unspent grant funds. Questions, comments?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 307, authorizing a grant agreement with the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services. Questions or comments?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 308, amending ordinance number 2017-400. Questions, comments?
President Scott? I'm sorry. Yes. So, I'm not sure where to begin on this one, because I don't understand it. So, I'm gonna ask if you could just give us an overview, because when I'm reading this, when it talks about text mining, language processing techniques, text algorithms, can you just give us a little bit easier, layman's terms, of what exactly we're doing with this?
Okay. For this particular grant, we had asked for an extension for one year. It's a grant that we're working on with RIT. And what they're doing is, they're working on a program where, with...
Well, see, if I don't understand it, you guys understand it.
To come up with a database, so to search PDF files, for example. We write reports still. Some of it has checkboxes, but other parts of it has text in the actual form. So it's a program to scan the text and come up with data for us that we can search the text more readily, if that makes sense.
So it's helping you to flag certain words, or?
Correct. For example, our subject resistance reports, right now, there's a lot of checkboxes. So those are easy to search. But then, in the narrative portion, we would actually physically have to read the narratives. So this particular grant is a group of people that are coming up with data that makes it more readily easy to search the actual contents of paragraphs.
So is the end result like a software landing page or something that you type in, "I'm looking for XYZ word," and it finds it in all of the documents, or?
Right. So...
What's the end outcome, I guess?
If you have like a PDF form, you know, or if you go into a form, and you can hit like F5, find, and you put a word in, that's what this does. That's what's going to help with our particular forms. Is that next one?
I guess. It's a little confusing, but I'll take your word.
So for our PD's particular forms, so we're not wasting manpower, it's an actual find function in the text and the narratives that they're working on. To kind of simplify it.
Got it. Find function.
Yes.
All right.
So is it an IT, so it's an IT function that RIT people who seem so brilliant to me, I feel like Lisa Boba, I don't know if she's here, can do anything. So they don't know? This is a different language, or, I mean?
I think it's, from what I understand, it's a grant. And I can get more information for you. It's a grant where they ask to work on this particular function. And I can get more information on you, on the specifics of the grant. I don't have that with me.
As long as it gets you guys what you need. Sometimes I fear that we have done projects that sound conceptually really good, and at the end of the day, I'm not sure we got back what we wanted. So maybe the clarity on the front end is important. You know, they say sort of nonsense in, nonsense out. I don't know much about IT myself. But I just, yeah, I have some of the, I didn't understand it either. Maybe it's just, Adam, do you understand it? You're an IT guy. So you know what I mean? I'm just wondering. It sounds like something we had to subcontract out, or maybe not. But it seemed to me that it's confusing. As long as we get at the end what we need to report back to the grantor, that would be, I think, important. So...
Absolutely. And when I get back, I can get more information and share it with you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Councilmember Spall, what is your specific request?
Well, I think that we're trying to figure out what, as we're asking the question, is that the functionality, what is it they're creating for us, and what will, what information will we get as a result? What are they, what are they, quote, finding, whether it's text finding? I think part of it is that we may not have the knowledge of the functionality. So I'm just, sometimes I get curious about when we subcontract with folks, and we get something, and it's not really that helpful to us.
Is that something that can be provided by Tuesday?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz, does that?
That's fine. I was just looking for a little bit more of a description, because I just really didn't understand it when I read it. That's all. Thank you.
I'm not sure you have to hold it. I just think... Yeah.
More information is great.
Any additional questions or comments on introductory number 308? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Excuse my tiredness. I lost track of time putting together chairs at my barber shop. Yeah, we got new chairs. Thank you. Excuse my tiredness. Introduction number 309, authorizing an agreement for motor vehicle accident records management. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Moved to adopt. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 310, amending 2018-19 Police Department budget and appropriating federal forfeiture funds to acquire seized vehicles. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Ortiz?
Any kind or type of vehicle? When it says, I'm just curious. It says the opportunity to take ownership of a vehicle, so on and so forth. Do we look for a specific type, or is it really any kind or type of vehicle that we deem useful for us?
It's any kind or type of vehicle that is seized. Yes.
No, no. But in terms of the ones that we look to purchase?
Quite honestly, last year, I think we purchased one. And they're far and few between now. So, yeah, I mean, they would obviously want to take the vehicles that are in the best condition, so that we get our money's worth with the $5,000 that we're setting aside.
Okay. So no specific type, as long as it works well?
No.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Introduction number 311, appropriating funds, authorizing an agreement with Rochester Area Crime Stoppers Incorporated. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Councilmember?
You have to abstain.
Oh, I have to abstain. I'm sorry. I abstain from 311. Thank you. Introductory number 312, authorizing a grant agreement with the County of Monroe for funding youth recreations and development programming. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Is there any other business to?
Councilmember Lightfoot, I have just a brief question. I don't know the representatives who are here from the police department. Your name, please?
Hi, Alina Kuria, Commander of Administration Bureau.
I'm just curious. I don't see Chief Seminelli, or Deputy Chiefs, or folk like that here often. Is there a reason for that?
Today, they're currently on vacation.
No, I'm talking to the mayor.
I'm sorry.
So, the commander is here. The chiefs are, well, Chief Simmons is on vacation. And we have a number of different community events that are out, that are going on right now. And so I know that they had made some previous commitments in that, you know, didn't realize that today was the council day. So, and then Chief Seminelli is, I believe, out of town, or if he's not, if he's on his way out of town, and he should be back next week.
And Councilmember Lightfoot, do you want to be included in the affirmative for the votes that were taken earlier in the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll record that. Thank you.
All right. Any other further business coming forward to Public Safety, Youth, Recreation Committee? If not, adjourn that committee.
One minute warning. One minute warning. One minute warning. One minute warning.
Baby Bodie was with Patty yesterday. Baby Bodie was with Patty for the first time. It's just, Jem's nanny cried all day long. Maya called me, cried. She said, Bodie has stranger danger. I said, no, he doesn't. He misses his mommy. He'll be fine. Today, he's better. She stayed home till, she'll be, well, Gemma always, he'll be okay, but it's, she's Gemma's man, I mean, they've had her for three years, so they love her, she loves them, but he cried, he'll just...
How we doing? Is it, is it... Can I ask that, are we good? Let's call the Arts and Cultural Committee together to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Spahl.
Here.
Councilmember Clifford.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Vice President McFadden.
Here.
President Scott.
Here.
And everybody else is still hanging on, thank you. Introductory number 313, authorizing the receipt and use of funds for the 2018 Clarissa Street reunion. Questions, comments?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I say aye, all opposed, motion carries. Introductory number 314, authorizing an agreement for the Rock Holiday Village event. Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to comment that I appreciate the new inclusive language and the spelling of Santa Claus. You've been spell checked, I realize, but... Santa Claus in our answers.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll move to adopt.
Can I have a second? Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I say aye, motion carries. If there's no other business to come before this committee, we are adjourned.
Please take your seats.
The meeting will come to order, and the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Clifford.
Here.
Councilmember Evans. Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Present, ma'am.
Councilmember Ortiz. Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Spahl.
Here.
Vice President McFadden.
Here.
President Scott.
Here. Let's ask the clerk to begin the hearings.
Pursuant to law, a public hearing will now be had on the following matter, amending the official map by memorializing College Avenue as Gary Stern Way. Introductory number 298, any persons desiring to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard.
If there are no speakers, that hearing is closed.
Oh, yeah.